First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have a request to move up item nine following item six due to a time constraint, so without amendment, I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the May twenty-third meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from the county treasurer includes A. Approval of refund requests for overpayment of taxes for parcel lending in one zero one six in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirteen cents. Item B. Approval of refund requests for overpayment of taxes for parcel lending in seven zero zero three in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one dollars. And C. Approval of resolution for tax abatement for Woodbury County. Number five for human resources includes A. Approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. And B. Authorization to initiate the hiring process. Uh, there's an update uh for five A, which is the addition of an intern that was uh approved and is uh reprinted on our, on our packets. Do you have anything to?
P.
Okay, thank you. And item six from secondary roads uh includes A. Approval of underground utility permit for Mid-American Energy. And B. Approval of permit to work in the right of way for Kevin Small. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Rattig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We're now on to the next item, which is from the county sheriff. Um, this is for action to approve, approval to waive the nepotism policy for three correctional officers within the office.
Good evening. Uh, I appreciate moving me up. Thank you. Uh, trying to uh hold down uh some duties while the wife is out of town, so I appreciate that moving it up. Um, what I'm here to ask, and I had reached out to Melissa, I talked briefly with uh Chairman Ong. Um, we have the opportunity to hire a correctional officer who retired, or who resigned maybe a month ago um to move to another state. Uh, in the meantime, we had hired the son of that employee. That employee wants to move back, and we would, we would love to have her back, but the nepotism policy would not allow it to happen. Um, her initials are KG in the, in the, in the background. And then also, we have two other correctional officers who are currently working for us, both outstanding employees. They're going to be getting married. Um, when we were looking into the nepotism policy for this first employee, we realized, okay, we have some employees that are gonna be facing the same policy violation without board um intervention and approval. So uh, I just thought it would be easier to cover all three at the same time. These two employees are, are great employees. Um, they're going to be getting married, and we don't want to lose either one of them. Uh, what we will do as an org, as, as the office, though, if, if you waive these uh three employees, we will assure you that we will never have the employees scheduled to work the same shift with each other. Um, I, I couldn't guarantee that under exigent circumstances or overtime issues, they might not be on the same shift, but they will not be scheduled to work the same shift. And uh, one would never be allowed to supervise uh another family member. So, we just ask you to, to waive that. According to my reading of the nepotism policy, the board has the approval to waive it and would ask you to, to waive that so we could hire this other employee and not have to have one of them resign.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Rattig, second by Taylor. Um, I've discussed this with Melissa and HR, but are there any questions pertaining to the individuals or the circumstances?
Uh, I would just add one thing. On a sworn side of the house, the deputies are exempt from the nepotism policy and the civil service. And, you know, we try to create a, an environment where one isn't above the other, that they're all equal, and our correctional officers, you know, similar to the deputies and similar to the military, you tend to have people and families who fall into that same line of work. So, I'm not saying we won't ever come back here and be asking for the permission again, but in this, in this particular case, I think uh that it's very warranted to, to do this.
Yeah, and I appreciate it coming forward with initials, and that way we can reach out to HR and get more information if we need it as it comes up. Any other questions? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
We'll now move on to our item uh number seven from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas. Um, Kevin Winker is here with us, representing um the Iowa District of, of his profession. So, give us an overview of how you came to come to Woodbury County, and we might have some questions for you, and apologize in advance if we have to uh have a set time at four forty-five and then get back to you, so.
Not a problem. Thank you for your time today. Um, I appreciate being here. Um, I'm Kevin Winker. I work for Midwest HIDA, which is the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas. It's a program under the Office of National Drug Control Policy. Currently, the local drug task force here receives funding from Midwest HIDA. Um, my purpose with Midwest HIDA is a little bit different. I'm, my primary responsibility is to support the National Overdose Response Strategy, which is a partnership between the CDC Foundation and HIDA's um to get public safety and public health working together on strategies to help reduce fatal and non-fatal overdoses in communities um for, from my perspective across the state of Iowa. So, I have a counterpart that I work with in the state. His name is Virgil Jackson. He's a University of Iowa trained epidemiologist. If you're an Iowa State fan, I apologize. Um, but he is uh very good, and he works the public health side, and the intent is to get public health and public safety sharing information and working on these issues in a coordinated fashion using best practices. Um, back in April, I met with Chief Mueller from the Sioux City Police Department and some of his key personnel over there to talk about the concept of an overdose fatality review team. And um, in, in doing that, there, there are certain costs that come up um when you try and run a team like this. It's a multidisciplinary team. It's designed to identify system gaps and community-specific overdose prevention and intervention strategies. It involves a series of confidential individual death reviews by a multi, multidisciplinary team composed of community members that work within organizations that have a stake in this. Um, it's really to identify patterns of need and opportunity across systems and develop, to develop program and policy recommendations. So, it, it is quite a bit of an undertaking, but it's community-based, and it needs community involvement, and it needs community coordination. And so, when I come into a community to start talking about this, I also have a, feel I have a responsibility to look at funding options because somebody's gonna have to take the lead uh to run this team. Um, it could be, you know, police department, sheriff's department, county attorney's office, um, Board of Health, uh, medical examiner's office. It could be any of these organizations that are typically involved in this multidisciplinary team, but somebody needs to take the lead. And with that comes the burden of having to coordinate, of having to put the information together, of having to run the meetings. So, oftentimes, we feel it's a best practice to have at least a, a half of an FTE or a part-time person, um, or take somebody within the office and, and get them to coordinate this meeting. But I hate, I hate unfunded mandates, so I'm always looking for opportunities. I know opioid settlement funds are, are being released to Iowa communities. Um, and Chief Mueller thought it'd be a good idea for me to get in front of you folks this evening to talk a little bit about an overdose fatality review team so that you might consider utilizing some of those opioid settlement funds um to, to improve outcomes here within the community. Um, I can, I can talk about kind of a little bit further about what it takes to um run a team. It, it really starts with recruitment of team members. There are nondisclosure agreements that likely would need to be made because you're dealing with a death review. It involves confidential information, and all parties have to agree that what gets discussed in these reviews stays confidential. But the intent is really to look at trends as you're doing these reviews to try and figure out, are there things that we can do better within Woodbury County um to maybe have better outcomes when we're encountering people with substance use disorders? And so, um, it, it involves the recruitment, the planning. There's a governance board for an overdose fa- fatality review team. Um, and those usually involve the leaders of the organizations that I had talked about previously, because as this board, or as this team does reviews and comes up with recommendations, the idea is to take the recommendations to the governance board because those folks are generally the ones that have the authority to bank the policy and procedural changes um to, to make improvements. So, in a nutshell, um, that's what an overdose fatality review team is. I, I think Wisconsin is running eighteen of them right now. Currently, Iowa doesn't have any. Um, the ORS program is fairly new in Iowa. I've been at this for about a year and a half, but the shift um has been made to look at these overdose fatality review teams. Number one, because they're, they're multidisciplinary teams, and I think you'll see the benefit beyond these teams because you're building relations, relationships amongst these organizations within your community. And I get the sense that there are already some of these partnerships occurring within this community after meeting with the chief as well. Um, I'd, I'd be happy to take any questions or cover anything that maybe I might have missed.
So, what does it take in terms of dollars and cents if we're talking about specific funds? And as you put together in your minds, I, uh, FTEs or a three-quarters time FTE here or there, uh, what are the dollars and cents that we're talking about?
It, it's hard for me to answer that because a local organization or agency is going to have to step up and take the lead if there's going to be a team here. And, and the leader of that organization is gonna have to decide whether they come and, and, and ask for money from the opioid settlement funds to do that.
Has that been identified at this time as far as?
It has not, no.
An agency law enforcement, Siouxland District Health, or some otherwise?
The only thing that I've done so far is meet with the Sioux City Police Department and their staff about this concept of an overdose fatality review team. The chief liked the concept, and he asked if I would come up and meet with you folks and talk about this, because as you're trying to recruit members or look for that agency, if you know you have the support of the Board of Supervisors moving forward, it might make it easier for an agency to step up and say, hey, if they're willing to give me half, funding for half of an FTE, um, it would probably make it easier in recruiting that agency to do that. But I can't tell you um at what job description, which will drive the pay and the benefits package and all that. It's, it's difficult for me to answer that.
So, it's kind of a chicken egg sort of thing? You can't, without having the guaranteed sources of funding for opioid, opioid settlement funds, um, it's going to be impossible to draw an agency that's going to want to take the lead? Is that a fair?
I, I wouldn't say that's fair because I haven't reached out to all those agencies. Um, I don't know if um there's an agency in this community that's willing to take this on without any additional funding. Um, having been involved at the executive level in state government for a number of years, um, I know it's a challenge um to do those types of things, to take on new programs with no funding. So, I think what the chief was thinking is, hey, let's get this out, make you aware that this program is out there as we try, and then go back and meet with some of these organizations to broaden the knowledge of this out within the community to find out, is there an agency? And if there is an agency that's willing to do it without funding, great. Um, I think that's a challenge for any administrator, so if you can throw in something, or at least have the support to say, hey, the board is willing to listen um to a, an alter, I don't think this will be the last meeting you're gonna hear this at, if you can find an agency that's willing to step up. So, if, if you have that, I would assume that the, the agency head would come in and make that request. But it certainly makes it easier to recruit those agencies to do that if we know we have support from the board that, hey, some of these settlement funds could be utilized for that, and maybe you want to put a cap on it and say, this is, this is what the board is willing to do over, over a twelve-month period, or even over a five-year period.
Thanks.
I'm gonna pause this. We're at our, uh, sorry, sir, we'll come back to you. Uh, we're at our four forty-five PM uh set time, which is item eight from Board Administration, includes a fraction of public hearing on the amendment number one to the Woodbury County FY twenty-three budget. Dennis?
Okay, this is our annual amendment. We usually do in May toward the end of the year, and we have to do it by today for to have enough, if there's any appeals, we haven't had any appeals in fifty years, so not really worried about that. The total amendment is twenty-one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, of which twenty million, twenty-six thousand, eight fifty-six are code funds we have to budget. So, that makes up most of it. And then you see the breakdown through the sheets further back on the next page here in your packet, show you all the different areas where the money is going, how they are funded through reserves or payroll deductions, or, you know, sale of a pickup trailer, things like that. These, a lot of these are even pre-approved, but we do a catch-up. So, what is being spent, has been approved, it's just a formality, get them into the budget, so we have them in the budget when we look at them next year. So, our budgets are reflective of what is happening. Now, some of these are one-time expenditures, some aren't. So, this is the part, I guess, be, what do you have for against?
Well, with the public hearing being open, is there anyone to speak or have questions for Dennis?
Hearing on Mr. Chairman, move that the public hearing be closed.
Second motion by Taylor. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Uh, item B is approval of the resolution for the budget amendment. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. Anything else to add, Dennis?
No, unless there's individual areas you'd like to cover, but otherwise, it's good.
Any individual questions? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is discussion and approval of transfer of appropriation in the sheriff's FY twenty-three budget due to employee transfers.
This can be done by motion of the board. Actually, what we do, we transfer from, usually it involves sheriff's power, moving people around after the budget's been set. You know, they may move a deputy from here over to here. Um, transport may go to the jail, or jailer may go to transport. This is a cleanup here to make sure they balance out at the end of the year.
Mr. Taylor?
Is this typical, or is this the product of?
Typical.
To revisit what we thought was once done and didn't get the notification into the?
No increase or change of positions. It's just moving people around. Still the same number of everything.
Did we do this prior to that?
Yes, we do it every year.
But we did this prior to the publication that was supposed to be? And so, we're just redoing it because that notification didn't get into the proper publication? Is that right?
Right. Well, this doesn't have to go into publication, like our budget amendment. This is just moving ten thousand from here over to ten thousand over here.
I'm just wondering why we're doing it now. Is, is it something that we?
Well, it's easier to tell at the end of the year. They have a very good idea who has been moved around in these departments, so we always wait till the end of the year to do it.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Rattig. Hearing no other questions. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. We can return to Mr. Winker. Um, while you're making your way up here, maybe a question for Dennis to, are these opiate funds, are they similar uses in city governments as compared to county governments? Do counties typically, I mean, in this other state you mentioned, are counties typically taking the lead, or are cities?
Well, I believe this is the first county he's been to in the state.
Currently, there is not an overdose fatality review team operating in Iowa. I've reached out to one other um county, um, city slash county, and so I'm working with them and going through the same process with them. Um, but certain, at this point, not one has been established yet.
Okay, but with cities, it's a similar use of funds allowed?
Uh, cities do not get any opiate funds.
It's just counties?
Counties. And we had to sign some forms there to make sure we got our share of it. And we, names, the county attorney and I went last week to an opiate conference, and these would qualify if the board feels fit to do it.
Okay.
Can I piggyback on that? What is the status of funds?
Status of funds, right now, we have four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand in the bank over, I believe, seventeen years, because this is spread out over a number of years, because involving billions of dollars throughout the whole United States. And it comes to Attorney General is kind of the key point, I think, in the state of Iowa. So, they set up kind of the guidelines there, but they do have the opiate uses, which is about fifteen pages of uses you can do it. And over a period of seventeen years, we're expecting around a billion, seven million, eight. There's no timetable, because some of the drug companies go into bankruptcy, so that ties up some of the money.
So, you said seven to eight million?
One point seven.
Okay, so four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand?
We have on hand right now.
But is that like one year's allocation, or?
Um, it's kind of a multiple, because one company did pay, they're supposed to spread out eight years, they did pay it all at once. So, that's why I got two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand from one.
Okay. Yeah, I was trying to do the math.
We don't know the exact payments, because the state doesn't even know the exact payments yet. All the details were worked through courts. But there is, they anticipate one point seven to one point eight million over a period of years.
And the funding allowances are fairly broad?
Yes. And it involves about seven drug companies. You're talking like Walmart, CVS, uh, Algreen, Algreen, I think. Um, it was Walmart. There's several, there's about seven of them. And one or two have gone to bankruptcy, so like I say, it's gotta go through court there. We'll probably get something. And then they hold back money for attorney fees, about fifteen percent. We may be getting some of that back if they don't use it.
Uh, so Mr. Winker, your role in this whole mix, if something was created, is it to help, help these uh councils of governments through the process? Is it to facilitate the information flow to the federal government? What is?
It's, it's really to assist the community and the organizations to establish the team and, and show them the best practices for running a team. So, i- if you establish a team here, you'll get support from myself and Virgil Jackson, the public health analyst. You'll get support from the National ORS Program, um, and you'll get support from the Institute for International Research, which IAR. It's a, it's a company that has subject matter experts that the ORS has contracted with to come out and assist with developing um your, your program here or your team here. So, I, I would be here probably on a regular basis. I could be a part of the team if the team wanted me to be involved, as well as um the public health analyst. Um, we would, we would assist with the development of the team and the coordination, but it's really a community-based effort that somebody is gonna have to take the lead on. But we can provide the expertise and the knowledge to get that team set up so the proper protocols are in place, the proper um information-sharing protocols and confidentiality's in place. And actually, um, if, if you, if they do decide to hire a facilitator or, or identify somebody like that, I could actually take them to Wisconsin, to Minnesota, to actually sit in and, and watch how one of these reviews gets done before they would be in the, in the chair and actually having to do it. So, we're here to facilitate this process, to provide our expertise, and to assist any way we can. But again, this is a, this is a community-based initiative that we're, we're here to support.
So, with best practices, does any of that include, for lack of a better term, legal advice? Because there's, it's a new process. Everyone's probably not going to know what the rules are, how to effectuate all of these, you know, levels of cooperation. Is it gonna be something where our county attorney's office is gonna need to spend time on this, or are you linked up with subject matter, legal experts, and different things like that to safeguard, you know, so we don't make any costly mistakes and things like that?
I, I think your county attorney's office is gonna have to be a partner in this. In the other county that I'm working in, um, that's where they're going for their legal advice. The, the subject matter, matter experts are, they're, they're national experts, but they're not in touch with all the unique um issues that we have here in Iowa regarding confidentiality, as opposed to the county attorney's office, which, which are gonna be more plugged into those issues. So, my recommendation would be is to have somebody from the county attorney's office involved in that process. And we could certainly reach out to the Attorney General's Office, too. Um, I have a pretty good relationship with the Department of Public Safety, um, and they have some representation from the Attorney General's Office. So, I think, again, if, if, if you move forward with this, um, you're not gonna be alone, and certainly if we get a number of different communities in Iowa doing it, you'll have that um support as well, because I, I would assume the teams would be talking to each other about procedures and things like that and what they're doing.
So, my question is, why are we, as a board, going to want to put funds towards kind of figuring out things after somebody's dead, rather than putting them towards maybe getting somebody off drugs or busting people and making sure we hold them longer when on drugs?
Well.
It's my question, sorry.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's a community decision that needs to be made, particularly with these funds. I will tell you that um the, the OFR teams are successful in that they allow you to look at victimology and how a person got from point A to point B to point C throughout their life, where there are opportunities to intervene and, and save this person's life. And what these reviews do is to allow you to walk through that victim's life to see what, what issues they were dealing with, who they were in contact with, and if the contacts might have changed a little bit, could it have um led to a different outcome and a, and an intervention? So, what you're really doing is trying to identify these gaps and look for um opportunities for intervention and looking for ways that is what we're doing now, the best process that we have to try and save people from overdose? And if not, the system is set up to make recommendations to this government, governance board based on what they're seeing in these reviews to say, hey, I think if we just started doing this, um, we could have an impact on overdoses. But to your question about where the funds should go, um, that's, that's gonna be a community decision. That's not, that won't be my decision.
What governing powers does this governance board potentially have, or is it really an advisory board?
Well, number one, they're, they're gonna decide if um their organization is gonna be involved in the team, and you're gonna want that buy-in from the leaders of those organizations to say, yes, I'm gonna have this person sit in on this multidisciplinary team to be involved with these reviews. Um, the um agencies may also have information on the subject of that particular review, whether it's a law enforcement agency, um, a doctor, a medical examiner, a treatment center, a hospital. All of those could potentially have information that can help paint this picture of what happened to this victim, so that you can get the best information um you can on the victim, and would there have been opportunities for an intervention um of some sort, whether it's, you know, pre-arrest diversion into a treatment program rather than going to a jail, whether it's um, um, people with um that have had issues like that, that are now working in um agencies that can talk those people through a process and get them into treatment. There, there are a number of different things that can come out of these. You know, the, the state already utilizes a child death review team, um, and they have a domestic violence death review team, and they're really based on the same principle. You're, you're looking at the victims and trying to figure out, could, can we make the system better to try and intervene so that these children aren't dying, that domestic partners aren't dying, and in this case, um, victims of overdose or poisoning?
So, the governance is really to control the flow of um information and participants in the discussion of the confidential discussions? And if there is a, for example, request for information from an entity to, you know, you, you need a puzzle piece, so to speak, um, you'd still have to go through the normal channels of, that you would right now, right? That this board wouldn't have authority to procure information that the separate pieces don't already have. Is that correct?
The concept is to set up the agreements before you start doing the reviews, so that everybody understands these are the rules, um, that it's okay to share this information for the strict purpose of doing these reviews. Um, and then the big piece on the governance side is the recommendations. So, you're, it, it all depends on the um, the pace that you want to do reviews. You may only do eight reviews a year. Is that enough to look at a trend or, or make a recommendation? It could be, um, but it may not be. So, it may take some time to review enough cases for the team to look at it and say, you know, I think there's an opportunity to do something here, because in six of the ten cases, this scenario happened. And I think instead of going down route A, if, if, if we can create a route B for them, we could, we could potentially save lives. And that's where you need the governance board to come in, because they're the leaders of these organizations. And if uh, you know, if, if the um, if the hospital needs to make? And if, uh, you know, if, if the, um, if the hospital needs to make a change in what they're doing, you want somebody with some decision-making capability from the hospital on your governance board.
Got it.
Can I ask a question of either Dennis or Joshua? So you all went to this opioid conference in terms of like allowable uses? Is it, or funding?
James and Dennis.
James and Dennis, okay. So I guess my question is, if we have some time that's dedicated in our county attorney's office, or let's say, Sulan District Health ends up being a lead agency, can we pay an equivalent of a quarter-time F T E or something like that for the county work that goes into this?
I believe you can, yes.
Okay. And I, I guess that would be, I, I think this sounds like an interesting and good idea that I, I would hope would have a, a warm reception, because we're limited on what we can use these funds for. I think it makes sense to have a, a local agency and then to look at things, whether it's, you know, how doctors counsel or veterans that are coping the wrong way, or whatever you're finding in the victimology. But I also am nervous about, you know, our county attorney's office has stretched right now, um, to a great degree. And if we say, well, we need, you know, even if it's five hours a week here from, you know, this other county, I wanna be able to recoup that as well. So those would just be, that's my sentiments. I don't know how you all feel, but.
I would assume if there's, uh, funding for this, it would be for more, more hours, more, more employed bodies, more help, rather than just, you know, allocating a portion of Joshua's time. Simply because there's going to be several organizations asking for legal help, I would assume. So I would, I would think it'd be, you know, perhaps the county would hire a full-time and pay half of it through this funding source, for example.
This also, I believe, can be multi-county. Because a lot of the other counties do not have a whole lot of money, and they stress down there, other smaller counties may have to join in with a bigger county to get something done. That's a possibility there.
So what are the next steps then in terms of you hear the reception that the board or the overtures that are made? An agency signals that they would like to be the lead agency and gets in touch with you, and then puts together some sort of proposal that would come back before the board? I mean, I'm just looking for what's actionable tonight versus informational.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not asking for any action tonight. I'm, it's more informational, just to make you aware that these are out there. My next step will be to follow up with Chief Mueller again, um, to start putting together another meeting, uh, a broader meeting with some organizations, um, within the county, to bring them together, to do a similar kind of an awareness of, hey, this is something that, that's being talked about in Woodbury County. Is there interest amongst these organizations to do this? And if there is, keep, keep going down that path. Now, the other commitment I'll make to you is, um, if this other county that I'm working with comes up with some good legal documents related to, um, information sharing and non-disclosures as it relates to an O F R team, I would be happy to obtain those and be able to share those, um, in Woodbury County. And I, I think the county would be more than willing to do that as well. To, to try and cut down, it's, it's harder to just go from a blank piece of paper than maybe looking at a draft and saying, hey, ninety percent of this looks good, but for Woodbury County, maybe we just tweak ten percent of it. So that's part of what I feel my job is as well, because if we can get multiple teams going up, I'll, I'll have interaction with all of them. And if we can get one up and going, I, I'm sure we'll be leveraging that team to help, um, get the others confident in what they're doing and moving forward and establishing their teams. So, um, this, this isn't a one-and-done for me. I'm in for the long haul. So any support that I can provide in, in, including obtaining that legal guidance and, and those documents to share with others, I will, I will absolutely do my best to get those.
Well, simply because the opioid funding is only available to counties, if there is a lead agency locally, I'd assume it would be Woodbury County. Only question would be if it's a attorney's office-led, um, budget or a, uh, district health-led budget? And the county could allocate to either with these funds, right?
We have funded H I D A. Is that right, H I D A? Attorneys before, as a actual project under the county attorney also.
Okay.
In past years, we've done one attorney, two attorneys. I think we're down to zero now.
Okay.
And would this group at all have any effect on our prisoners or inmates out the county jail? Would you get involved with them at all with this kind of a group?
Is, you mean as far as, well, I, I would say probation parole would, would have a role in the team. I don't think it'll have an impact, impact on the inmates there, unless there's a recommendation that comes out of the team that somebody decides things need to change.
Does it have to be a governmental entity that's the agency? And I guess my, I'm just thinking of like Rosenkrantz and Jackson Recovery, you know, the, as far as the, the lead agency, because it's in their wheelhouse. Even if it's, you know, a member of district health that's gonna be on the team and a member of the sheriff's office and county attorney.
Well, that depends if we can allocate county funds or opioid funds.
Yes, you can.
Outside, you can?
Outside groups, yes.
Okay.
You can do that. But the total control lies with the board of supervisors, where the money goes or how much.
Got it.
So just throwing that out, that that may be because that's their bailiwick or wheelhouse that, maybe a possibility. I don't, I don't wanna speak for them.
The, the state teams, the domestic violence death review team and the child death review team are both run out of the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. But, yeah, it, it doesn't matter from my perspective which agency takes the lead. I think it's more of a concern of yours is can you allocate those funds to, to a non-county agency, and I don't know the answer to that. If you can, I certainly don't have a problem with, um, working with a non-governmental agency, um, to, to take the lead on, on this team.
I appreciate, uh, you coming tonight and for all the information. I think what you're doing is great. And I think that, you know, definitely knowledge is power and, and just like you said, connecting the dots. If we can understand the process of how someone got there, we can potentially help them. Um, I also agree with Supervisor Raddick, though, you know, being that these funds are so new that we could have non-governmental agencies coming forward requesting our help with other things. I know we're not asking for any, um, you know, motions tonight, but, uh, that's just kind of what's in the back of my mind, is, is, is this is all very new and fresh. Hopefully that there are other people in the community that are coming out with ideas or come to us with ideas of how they could help this crisis. I think that's what this money was intended for, and it's imperative that we spend it that way, you know. But, uh, I, I do like what you've pitched here and appreciate the, the help and the information and, but that's, I guess, like, my comments on this, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll follow up with Dennis and the attorney's office on other potential uses of these funds, so we have a more of a plan on, on what the county can use them for within the county's budget as well and, and see if we can.
Yeah, we've, we've had two other requests besides this gentleman here. So let's just see what they are, weigh them out, go from there.
Yep.
And there'll probably be more, once the word gets out.
Well, just to be clear, again, I'm not asking for anything. It'll be a local organization or agency that comes forward asking for it. I'm just here to provide information tonight on, on, on the concept.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board discussion on this? Hearing none. Item ten from planning and zoning, uh, for action is to direct the zoning commission to review, consider a zoning ordinance text amendment, proposal to amend the zoning ordinance line use summary table to designate temporary heavy construction services aggregate crush and screen, temporary asphalt mixing temporary and concrete mixing temporary as conditional uses in the general commercial and highway commercial zoning districts.
Good afternoon, Dan Priestley, zoning coordinator. Um, just kinda wanna point out with the Highway twenty project going on, um, we've identified in the ordinance, the general, uh, commercial zoning district actually does not facilitate a temporary use for somebody to set up like a concrete batch or asphalt mixing or, uh, a crush. And, uh, that being enumerated directly in the ordinance as a temporary activity, um, it makes it kind of a little bit more difficult to facilitate those type of projects and even other, uh, road type of projects. And so this request is to look at the ordinance and have the zoning commission kind of consider, uh, these type of projects relative, uh, to the entire road system. I will point out that the Highway twenty corridor, uh, the general plan looks at that as a commercial area. So it kind of, uh, would be reasonable to consider the zoning commission, Board of Adjustment, being able to consider permits, basically to facilitate those, uh, type of road projects. That's primarily where most of our commercial is. And, uh, uh, so kind of going back to two thousand and five, it's kind of fascinating to look at, uh, the different uses and how they originally came up with that categorization, and now with the priority of the corridor, um, and those respective changes. I guess, in a nutshell, uh, this, uh, particular request, uh, sort of is possibly cleans-up language to facilitate, uh, construction. So we simply just bring this request over for consideration and maybe possible direction to look at it.
Yeah, from my understanding, it's a, from start to finish, a couple-month process to get on the agenda for zoning, is it? And then?
It, it could be very possible. There's a few things going on with the corridor. The, they had some borrow pits recently approved to facilitate the project. Then we go look at the ordinance and were approached by a contractor and they asked, asked for it on a commercial parcel. Then we say, sorry, we can't even consider a permit. So it's really about the actual location of these, uh, particular parcels. So I do anticipate, uh, requests and applications to do this on commercial property. Right now, you can consider, uh, this type of permit on a industrial, general industrial, limited industrial, as well as agriculture. It's just that, uh, we find that we run into this, this because it's designated commercial.
And from our meeting with, uh, the county engineer as well, there is going to be future needs to address this for, what was it?
Um, we have any number of projects that are going to be coming up. In our five-year program, we have, uh, U S seventy-five, we have, uh, a portion of, uh, Old Highway one forty-one. We have Dallas Avenue. All of these are going to require either an asphalt plant or a portable ready-mix plant. We got lucky on our current project at Hornick. It's sitting on county right-of-way. So they didn't need to go through the conditional use, uh, policy to be able to set up. They were able to set up on, on county-managed property, but that's, uh, a rarity. I wasn't aware this existed either until, uh, we were confronted with this issue for the Highway twenty paving contractor. Uh, they were looking at what appeared to be an ideal site that had recently been rezoned, and, uh, they're, they're locked out of that site. We've had a need for these, uh, type things before with, um, a project down Danbury. We did the Danbury Blacktop. That one's set up inside the town of Danbury, so it never really tripped any alarms for us. But, um, we can see three to four projects in our own five-year program, not to mention what D O T may be planning. That, uh, I think this commercial use is a, is a good location for it to be in. If we can take ag property out of production for a few years to allow a temporary plant like this, general commercial where that's not going to be returned to an ag, uh, use, and that land isn't being impacted, seems to be a, a good place for this type of a use, to me, anyway.
I'll move the motion, which is the same wording as the agenda outline.
Second?
Second by Raddick. Any questions for, for Dan? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post-saying aye. Passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is eleven, reports on committee meetings.
Supervisor Nelson and I met with our county engineer last week, had a good meeting. I met some of the office staff and just, uh, just learning the ins and outs of the county engineer and the rule and, and what to look for in the future. So it was a good meeting with Mark and, uh, looking forward to many more and just, uh, just gaining that knowledge. We were talking about just learning what's the best, how to plan for the future, so, for the county. It was just a good meeting. That's all I have, yeah.
I don't have anything other than, uh, thanks again for Mark for having me out there and Dan, and we took a little tour of Moville and, uh, saw some of the growth that they're doing. So Jim Fisher, if you're listening, we, uh, did a little tour, but, uh, anyway, I, otherwise I don't have anything else to report.
I had a few. So Murd gave out the target grant awards there on Wednesday. Simcoe, CERPA, R P A, uh, we approved, well, actually, we, we were presented the draft for the Transportation Improvement Program. Uh, we'll approve that next month and then, uh, went over that, uh, public participation policy again. We gotta do that on every single, uh, Simcoe board. So it's, that's a lot of doing the same thing over for me, because I'm on almost every one of their boards. Wicker Tiff, which I know Matthew holds a special place in his heart for the Western Iowa Community Improvement Regional Housing Trust Fund. Uh, we, we approved financials, housing managers' report. For Woodbury County, we have zero projects out for bid, fifteen on the waiting list, one application in process and four hundred construction. We've had a lot, uh, get done in the last year on the construction side of those. But it's been a challenge again, because different contractors retire and then now you gotta find somebody to fill their shoes. And it's really interesting, because, uh, she says when she meets with contractors, a lot of them say like, what's the catch? So like, is this a scam? Like, no, you're, you're guaranteed payment just through the job, you know? And then, uh, Western Iowa Workforce Development Board, which we had dissolved. We got a notice from Iowa Workforce Development that they have accepted our decision to dissolve. So, that's good to know.
Hardy, congratulations for your role.
Well, and reading the letter from them, it was kind of like, we have the authority to shut you down. And that's like, yeah, okay, well, that's, uh, that's basically the gist of that.
And so they did, because you asked.
Yeah. They chose not to shut us down, but just to accept our.
Got it. Got it. Important designation for who knows what reason. Any other reports? Item twelve, any citizen concerns for items not already addressed on the agenda? Hearing none. Item thirteen, any board concerns? Hearing none. We are adjourned.